Just can down by my count, we do not as yet have a quorum for the city council. I've got three. And but we do have a quorum for the planning commission at at five.
Okay, I see council member Emilio signing in.
Okay. Well, let's begin. A good afternoon, everyone. This is I on city council and planning commission joint housing study session. It's Wednesday, November third, twenty twenty one at four oh three P M. Call the meeting to order and let's have a roll call, please.
Mayor Peak.
Here.
Council members Emilio.
Here.
Letty.
Here.
Badri.
Here.
Uh, planning commission chair Lily.
You're muted.
I'm sorry, I'm here. I needed to unmute.
Thank you. Vice Chair Chacklin.
Present.
Commissioners Aishelman. Lou. Bern.
Here.
Murphy.
Here.
And Sawyer. Commissioner Sawyer.
Wait, I'm present. I'm present.
Thank you. I I could see you. I just didn't hear you. And council member McAdams, I'm showing is present at the meeting now as well.
Okay. And council member McAdams. If you could verify that you're here. Okay. All right. Well, hopefully, council member McAdams will speak to us and note that she's in uh present.
I'm here.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So we'll start the meeting before I ask for approval of the agenda. I want to note for the record that this is a special meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council, and this meeting was approved by four council members. All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
In a second.
I'll second it.
And a roll call.
Mayor Peak.
Here, yes.
Council members Emilio.
Yes.
Letty.
Yep.
McAdams. Yes. Aduri.
Hi.
Chair Lily. You're muted, sir.
Yes, yes.
Vice Chair Chacklin.
Hi.
Uh, Commissioners Bern.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
And Sawyer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have one item on the agenda, as I mentioned, housing housing study session, and this is going to be conducted by Anastasia Wyatt, our housing program manager, and I'm going to turn over the entire rest of the meeting to this um Wyatt. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate everybody attending this evening and being a part of this study session. Uh, the state has with all the housing prices and affordability issues, inventory issues, been really pushing a lot of legislation through uh to address these issues statewide. And we wanted to take the opportunity to be able to bring some great information to you today uh from David Driscoll. He is the principal at Barrett and Driscoll. You all may know him from the Welcome Home Plan. And also Michael Mara from, he's also a partner at Best Best in Krieger and will be here to help us understand some of this information and how it applies to us locally and how we can achieve some of our housing goals locally with this legislation. So I really appreciate everybody coming tonight. Just a little few points of order. We're going to end at five fifty this evening so that there's time for preparation for the city council meeting. And we will have a two-minute public comment after our speakers uh present. We expect the presentations to probably last an hour and ten to an hour and twenty minutes. And uh then I will open it up for public comment and then recognize the city council and the planning commission members for uh your comments. So thank you, everyone. I I want to get go ahead and get started with our first speaker, and that will be Michael Maurer, who is the part a partner at Best Best in Krieger. Michael, thank you for being here today and putting together a really careful presentation. I'll go ahead and uh let you share your screen and get started.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all. Nice to meet you all. Um, so I should know how to do this by now, but I'm gonna try my best to to share my screen and get it up here for you. All right, can we all see it? Okay. I don't have my my email or anything like that up there.
We can see it, great.
All right, so so I'll I'll jump right in here. Um, we're the presentation today. I really want to focus on S B nine, which is the most recent um bill that was passed. Um, obviously, there were a lot of housing bills that were passed this year, but S B nine is by far the most significant. Um, this is the one that essentially gets rid of single-family zoning. Um, so we'll go into a little more detail about that in a minute. As Anastasia mentioned, my name is Michael Maurer. I'm a partner at Best Best in Krieger. Um, and one of the things we've done is we've put together a group at our firm who's really taken a team effort to dive into this bill. As you'll see, it's uh, I told one of my other clients, it it's not very long in words, but in figuring out what those words mean, it it's very detailed. Um, so we've really looked at it in in a lot of different ways, and there's a lot of twists and turns here, a lot of things that are unknown. But we we want to kind of lay those out for you tonight and and, you know, focus on what we see as our best interpretation of this bill. Um, before we get into S B nine, I want to very quickly give a little bit of background of how we got to this point. So what you'll see in the news with S B nine is that California has done away with single-family zoning, and that follows somewhat of a national trend. Um, I believe other cities like Minneapolis and Portland or cities, I should say, have done similar things. I believe some other states have. Um, but that's really how this is looked at in the media. But I think there there's a few things because it's, you know, over the last few years, we've kind of been building up to this point. Um, so one thing I like to remind folks, and and you probably all know some of this, but it it's a good refresher. Um, a lot of what we talk about with the housing bills today relate back to the RENA or the regional housing needs allocation. You know, this is, of course, um, the rule where you have to adopt your housing element, and the housing element has to effectively enable zoning for your share of the regional housing needs um at various income levels. Um, I'm not going to go too deep into that process other than just to say this is something that's been around for a while, right? We're talking about the sixth cycle now. It's nothing um in itself that's new, although the way we approach it and the way we discuss the RENA and the housing element has certainly sped up over the last few years. Um, when we're talking about housing, I also think it's worthwhile to note that part of where we're at is with redevelopment ending. Um, redevelopment was a program that enabled cities effectively, um, you know, in 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 a very complex way, it enabled cities to invest in affordable housing and to invest in developing more housing. That program went away in twenty eleven. Um, you know, many cities have been working to unwind it since then. I I I don't know exactly what Pacific Grove has gone through as far as redevelopment, but I think it's worth pointing out that when we're talking about housing, we're looking at the tools for developing more housing and what the newer approach is. There was a different approach that we used to use that that went away about a decade ago. Um, and it's also worth noting density bonuses. Uh, density bonus is a program that's been around for a long time. And effectively, what a density bonus means, it's a state law requirement. But it means if a developer commits that a certain number of the units are going to be reserved for lower income levels, lower, very low income. Um, then the developer gets additional bonus additional density that they can build to um as well as other development concessions to enable that building at that density. So the in the classic sense, I believe, if ten percent of the units are for low-income affordable housing, then that would give a twenty percent bonus on the density. So it's a way that it it's intended to encourage affordable housing. Uh, the criticism of the density bonus law is ten percent isn't that much. What it's really doing is making more market rate housing. All right, so what what happened to kind of get how the legislature governs housing these days? And the big tipping point here was S B thirty-five. S B thirty-five was a bill that was passed in twenty seventeen. It was um written by Senator Weiner. And S B thirty-five allows for streamlining. So what streamlining means is a developer who's proposing a multifamily affordable housing project doesn't have to get a conditional use permit, even if a city requires a conditional use permit, doesn't have to go through CEQA review. Um, it's effectively a ministerial over-the-counter approval, notwithstanding generally having to do conditional use permit or or CEQA. And what Senator Weiner did in this bill is he said cities have to ministerially approve S B thirty-five units if they haven't constructed um to their required RENA numbers. So sort of the collateral effect from S B thirty-five is it really shined a light on these RENA numbers that weren't necessarily front and center before. Um, so then what happened is a lot of a lot of other bills started looking at the RENA numbers. There was backlash. Um, there was a a lot of news stories about the city of Beverly Hills who their RENA required that they build three affordable units, and they did it. So they were able to build three affordable housing units in Beverly Hills, but a lot of other agencies and and other um entities pointed at that as an issue with the RENA numbers. So it was something where by tying specific approvals to RENA, the you know, this process has always been there, but it really brought out a different um a different way that we looked at it. A couple of years later in twenty nineteen, um, A B, there was a series of bills, A B sixty-eight, thirteen, and eight eighty-one that allowed for accessory dwelling units by right. Um, so I often ask when I'm doing presentations like this, do we allow single-family zoning in California? And I'd argue the answer is no in a lot of ways because we have to allow accessory dwelling units. So even before S B nine, we were allowing multiple dwelling units. And then twenty nineteen was a big year. The other thing that happened was S B three thirty, which created a pre-application process where developers would get development rights at the time they submitted an application. Um, normally, as a city, we can revise what our rules are even against pending applications. S B three thirty changed that for housing development projects as well as preventing um downzoning of sites. So if you're zoned for higher-density housing, you can't go to lower density without compensating for that net loss. And then finally, um, A B one oh one took all of this housing motion and said the attorney general's got the ability to enforce it. So A B one oh one in twenty nineteen kind of brought that that hammer that ties a lot of this together. Um. I'll move on with that. So going to S B nine. What does S B nine require? And there are really two things. So S B nine requires ministerial approval. Um, and maybe I should pause real quick. When I say ministerial approval, ministerial means over-the-counter, no exercise of discretion. So a conditional use permit where you as planning commissioners are weighing what conditions you would oppose, whether you would approve it or not, that's a discretionary approval. A ministerial approval is like a building permit. You bring your plans to the counter. If your plans meet building code, they get stamped approved. Um, so what S B nine does is it applies a ministerial approval process to urban lot splits. So that's taking one lot and splitting it into two or to two-unit projects. So that's taking a single-family lot and either adding a second unit to it, similar to an A D U or constructing two units on that lot. Um, so there are two things that S B nine primarily does. And then it also restrains some of the local standards, local development standards, which we'll go through um, once you've actually done a lot split or when you're applying for that second unit. A few things that are applicable to both lot splits and two-unit projects. There are limitations on placing A D U's when you're doing an S B nine project. If you do an S B nine lot split or add a second unit, short-term rentals aren't allowed. So it has to be for longer-term residential use. It can't be used for a an Airbnb or something like that. Uh, the city has to prohibit that. Um, and then because it's ministerial, CEQA doesn't apply. So another streamlining procedure. Um, if someone comes in and gets an over-the-counter approval for their lot split, they don't have to do an E I R and M N D, something like that. Right, so and this is the rule, the second bullet point down here. This is the rule for um for A D U's. Um, if you essentially what can happen is you can do a lot split, so split a single lot into two. And then you can also develop two units on each of those lots. So you you may have seen we when we sent out our our news release, it said this isn't a duplex bill. It's actually a fourplex or a quadplex because you can do a split and then two on each. But what you can't do is if you do two on each with the split, you can't do A D U's on top of those. So you can do a split and end up with four, but you can't add extra A D U units on top of that. All right, so here's um, I I kind of split the discussion into the two separate topics, one being the urban lot splits and two being um being the the two units per lot. So to qualify for a ministerial approval under S B nine, there are some minimum requirements. One is that if you're doing a lot split, both lots have to be at least twelve hundred square feet. And that's not a typo. That's that's potentially very small to be developing a a single-family residence or a duplex. Um, so the city has to allow a lot split, even if the lots all the way down to twelve hundred square feet. Um, but what helps in that regard is the second rule that the split must result in essentially equal-sized lots at most sixty forty. So if you have a one-acre lot and you split it into two, you can't split it into a twelve hundred square foot lot and a forty-one thousand square foot lot. Right? It would have to be effectively at a twenty thousand and a um I'm gonna I'm gonna botch the math, but basically forty percent of an acre and sixty percent of an acre. Um, so you're at least not ending up when you're doing this ministerial approval. You're not ending up with a really small lot breaking off of a really big lot. It's effectively going to be fifty fifty. Um, and that's at least what you have to allow. You could always allow adjustments to this if if the city were so inclined. And then the the lot split's not allowed on any. Go ahead, there question? I'm sorry. If there are questions, feel free to to jump in as well. Um. So there there are some limitations on the type of housing that can be on a lot to qualify for an urban lot split. The biggest one is this one down at the bottom. Um, you can't alter demo any housing that was occupied by a tenant in the last three years. Um, so that's something we'll we'll have to talk with your city attorney. You'll have to talk with staff internally um to figure out, you know, at the time of application, how do we verify something like that? But that is a, to me, a significant exception. The other exceptions are a little more straightforward. Um, they involve rent control or some sort of affordability covenant on the property. Um, but if it if it's an alteration or a demolition of property that had a tenant within the past three years, then it's not eligible for a ministerial approval. All right, and to qualify for a ministerial approval under S B nine, um, what S B nine does, and I I apologize, I keep throwing all these bill numbers out there, but it actually relates to S B thirty-five. So in twenty seventeen, when S B thirty-five was adopted, um, the bill said it applies generally, but not in these eight or nine zones or, you know, properties with these eight or nine conditions. S B nine has incorporated that by reference. So under S B nine, it has to be a single-family zone. It has to be a zone where a single family is allowed. So you're not going to split your industrial property and put housing there. It has to be somewhere where single-family zoning is at least um in allowable use. Um, you you can't do a lot split if it's in a historic zone or a historic district. Um, I I should rephrase that. If it's in a historic district or if the property itself's a historic landmark. So some areas, there are, you know, whole districts that are historic for various reasons, and you wouldn't be able to use S B nine there. Um, it has to be within an urban cluster, which is basically everywhere in California. Um, very limited places where that's not considered urban. Um, even if you don't consider your community urban necessarily by definition, it would apply there. Um, this is another key rule. There can't be any prior S B nine lot split. So again, this is something that we would have to talk with staff about the best way to implement. But what this effectively means is, take the example I had of a one-acre lot, and someone splits that into two half-acre lots. They can't now split it again into two-quarter acre lots. So you're you're not under this bill going to get a situation where you just keep splitting and splitting and splitting all the way down to that twelve hundred square feet. It's supposed to be a single split, and that's all. Um, again, doesn't mean you can't subdivide it again under normal city procedures. But just for the ministerial requirement, you there isn't going to be split, 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 split all the way down to twelve hundred square feet. Um, the owner can't coordinate with other folks, so you can't effectively keep doing a split by, you know, having your neighbor be the applicant and things like that. Um, it does have to meet the standards of the Subdivision Map Act, which we'll get to that a little more in a minute. So the these are the lists that come from S B thirty-five where urban lot splits just don't apply. It's on farmland that's generally prime farmland. Um, so not, you know, not a not a property that has um a few apple trees or something like that. It's property that's designated as farmland, sensitive wetlands. Um, there are some limited restrictions for very high fire hazard severity zones. Um, if it's a hazardous waste site, then you can't. If it's within a flood plain, then you can't. Um, if there's endangered species habitat on it, then you can't. So all of these, they all seem like pretty big exceptions, but they tend to be pretty narrow areas where they're often wouldn't be housing anyway. Um, the one you'll notice that isn't on here is coastal zone. Coastal zone is exempt under S B thirty-five. I'll explain in a minute how how it works under S B nine. All right, so here's here's sort of what I see as one of the big takeaways is on an S B nine lot split, the city can still impose any objective zoning or development standards. So you can't have discretionary review. You can't um impose something like a subjective design review, but your existing standards can still apply. So this is um, and I oh, I'll let David address some of this a little more, but what this means is that your development standards don't go out the window. Right? If you have a setback requirement, you can still have a setback requirement. In some ways, it gives way, but your objective standards still apply. So I think this is of critical importance, and what cities really want to look at is we have to allow this ministerially, but we can still put objective restrictions if someone's going to do a lot split. So it um it's a very key rule and a a very key point in saying that this isn't just completely giving away all authority of a city. It's just that we have to identify what our authority is. The one catch to this rule, sort of from a from a thirty thousand-foot level is that we can't impose objective standards that are going to defeat the purpose of S B nine. So the city can't say, well, this is great. Let's impose, you know, come up with some sort of standard. You can't develop housing on any lot that's been split or something like that. Um, if you do something like that to defeat the purpose of S B nine, it's not uh, it's not going to pass muster. But if the objective standards still enable S B nine to be effective, then they can be enforced. Um, so here's some of the 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 restraints. You have to be able to allow two properties on each split lot or two units, I should say, at eight hundred square feet each. So what this means is you don't have to allow anything above that necessarily. Um. So any of your development standards will have to yield in order to allow two eight hundred square foot units. But beyond that, you can still apply them. Um, so if there are, we'll we'll get to setbacks in a second. That would be a good example. Um, actually, maybe I'll jump down there right now. So the setback rule says you can impose objective standards, and even if you can't build an eight hundred square foot unit, you can still allow four-foot rear and side yard setbacks. So what that means is if your property standards generally allow for, say, a twenty-foot setback, and someone does a lot split, they come in and apply to do two eight hundred square foot units. If they can build them and keep that twenty-foot setback, then the city can enforce a twenty-foot setback. If you can't foot fit to eight hundred square foot units, then the setback has to give way up to four feet. So does that make sense? So the concept here is there's a minimum that we have to allow, which is these two hundred, two eight hundred square feet units. If they're not going to fit, then our standards start to give way. And then we're looking at which standards give way. If they do fit, then we still get to enforce our standards. So someone can't come in and say, I want to do a duplex under this. I'm going to split. I'm going to build two, and I'm going to put one where the house generally has to go and the other up against the back property line. Um, because then we can say, no, they'll fit in this. We want you to comply with our status. So one exception is if there's an existing structure, we can't enforce a setback. So that's kind of a big, big exception. Someone can split it and split the lot right along the line of their house. Um, so that is a big exception. Another big exception is we can only require one parking space per unit. So it's an S B nine rule. That's not a great rule for for a lot of agencies, especially agencies or um cities who don't have a lot of public transit or don't have a lot of density already. That could be a very tough rule, but there is a limit to only one, and it actually goes down to zero if they're within a a transit stop, which would include a bus stopper or car share. Um, once there's a split, it can only be residential use. You can't do any other uses on it, um, although there could be accessory structures, and the city can't require any dedications or off-site improvements. So we can impose development standards. You have to do X, Y, Z to build here, but we can't say you have to improve the intersection down the road or something like that. Intersection down the road or something like that. We also can't require corrections of legal nonconforming is how I would interpret that. And the person who does the law split, they have to by affidavit say they're going to live there for three years. Live in one of the split units. We can't require any other owner occupancy, but they have to say they're going to live there for three years by by affidavit under penalty of perjury. There's an exception for nonprofits that provide affordable housing. And then, so here's the coastal zone application. SB nine says. So keep in mind, or this is sort of a square pagan around pole. Because the legislature has said, we want everything to be ministerial. And then, as you start to peel that back, you realize there are a lot of things that are discretionary. And so the way they've tried to make this work with coastal zone. Is that your coastal development plan still applies? But under SB nine is still an over the counter approval. So there wouldn't be a hearing. Related to a local coastal permit. But an applicant would still have to comply with the coastal development standards. This is one, I think, we're we're going to be figuring out a little bit over time because it does just feel like such a square pagan around pole. But I think one of the takeaways is. At least the coastal development plan still applies.
Michael, sorry, I have I have a question. Can you go back to slides? When you were talking about the owner occupied. So in Pacific Grove about. A little over twenty percent of our housing is currently second homes. And or not utilized. So when you're talking about. You know, owner occupancy. Does it specify they need to be full time owners? Can they just come? On the weekend, once a quarter? I mean, how how can? If possible, how can Pacific Grove really make efforts to make sure? Or that all of these sort of absent homeowners aren't just adding more absent homes to our neighborhoods?
And I would emphasize this this term right here that it says. They have to sign the affidavit saying it will be their principal residence. So. That's what's coming from the statute is that it has to be their principal residence. We we'd have to discuss if. There were more we could do as to how we refer to it as a principal residence. Maybe if there's more information that could be required at the time of application. So I think there are great questions about how you would. How you would enforce that requirement and kind of flush that out. I think one thing to keep in mind is the purpose of the statute is to add more housing. Right? So adding a second home for the same homeowner doesn't necessarily accomplish that purpose. So I do think there is a little bit of room for some interpretation. To ensure that this actually does what it's supposed to do, which is get someone else into a housing unit. So but that's really the key is we'd have to look at it as principal residence, and I think we'd have to work at the staff level and figure out how we wanted to find that. And what information we'd want to see at the application level.
Thank you.
So here's, this is another big unknown, another square pagan around pole. There, because it's a ministerial approval, there are very limited grounds to deny. So a city can deny. If the building official makes a written finding based on a preponderance of evidence. That the proposed housing development project would have a specified adverse impact on. Health and safety or the physical environment. For which there is no feasible mitigation. So this is straight out of the bill. Here's why this is weird. A building official doesn't generally make any findings related to the physical environment. Right? This is generally a planning function, an environmental consultant function. Building official makes findings related to health and safety if it's a building code violation. But there could be other health and safety impacts related to traffic, fire impacts, things like that, that might not necessarily be a building official finding. So really fleshing out how this is going to work is going to be challenging. But there is some leeway for cities to deny. Projects based on there being a specific health and safety or physical environment finding. And again, it it's the reason the status said building official, I think, is because. Normally, all of this is discretionary, right? If you're saying there is an impact on the physical environment. It's hard to do that just over the counter. You're looking at that on a project by project basis. So I think what they're doing is trying to keep this over the counter by saying building official. But it's really going to take a more holistic overall approach when there is an application. And I think what to keep in mind here is that there really does have to be some sort of specific. Public health and safety or environmental impact that you can point to that can't be mitigated. So it's hard to say just offhand. You know, this would be an impact, but I would think about things like if there is a potential fire risk. Or, you know. You know, inability for. Fire trucks to serve or. Fire flows, things like that. You know, if there's some sort of environmental factor that that goes beyond. You know, we already said sensitive habitat, but if there's some other sort of environmental factor that could be found. It's just, you you don't want to make a finding that's just pretextual here. It's got to be a bona fide health or safety or environmental issue. Alright, so then moving on to the two units, it's effectively the same thing. There really isn't much more to add. The rules are effectively the same, other than. For a lot split, you're approving separating the lot into two. For a two unit projects, you're approving. Either two units at development stage or adding a second unit. So again, it's the same same kind of limitations. The only other difference is this demolition cap. Which just says you can't demolish twenty five percent of the exterior walls of an existing building. So this isn't a redevelopment, though. It's adding a second unit. And same, again, same restraints. I went over that the ADUs earlier, and again, short term rentals aren't allowed, so someone can't do a lot split and then rent it out by Airbnb. I think there's, again, a good question of how is this enforced? Is this something that's going to want to be recorded against the title or something like that to ensure that? A new buyer isn't just buying these properties to turn them into Airbnbs. And then we'll touch on two more very quick. SPA, this goes, this was another one passed this year. That really what it does is it extends some of the other limitations that we talked about at the beginning. So like the. The rule that against down zoning and replacing it, that was set to expire in twenty twenty five, and now it's extended to twenty thirty. So it's really just a lot of things that we were looking at a few years ago and saying, well. These all end in twenty twenty five and then will reassess. Now they're pushed out another five years. And then SB ten is an optional program. This is another bill from Senator Weiner that started out as a mandatory requirement. And turned into an optional program where cities. Can choose to allow ten residential units or more. As a by right streamlined ministerial approval in certain areas. And actually, what SB ten allows is you can allow those types of developments, even if there's a local. Initiative that would prevent them. So it's sort of a. If there's a local initiative presenting, preventing more density. The state has now gone above that initiative and said, here's an optional. Program, your city council can follow to override that's that local initiative. I realize that's very confusing, but I think the biggest takeaway is. SB ten is just optional. It's still local control. It's not something that the legislature is pushing down. And then I didn't know, I I didn't word this correctly, but there were over thirty some bills related to housing that were signed this year. So SB nine kind of overarches everything. But, you know, even with with our group, we're still going through bill by bill to to try to figure out what exactly. All of these requirements are. Because it really is. Twenty seventeen, when SB thirty five was passed, was a big, here's our housing package, and it was fifteen. And now it's here's our housing package and it's thirty something. So it's just, it's become a real challenge to to keep up with all of them. I see we have a question?
Yes, thank you. If. If a city created or designated. A new historic district. Would that be exempt from SB nine requirements?
It would be. So and there are. That's the easy answer, I guess you could say. Because it SB nine isn't limited to an existing historic district. And cities under the government code have the ability to designate a district as historic by by following that process. The the ultimate answer is more complex, but that that's the answer. Are there any other questions? Go ahead, Mayor.
I thank you very much for the presentation. I had a question along the same lines. We have a. List of historic. That we call it the HRI Historic Resource Inventory of about twenty percent of the housing stock. And are all those? Properties. Excluded from SB nine?
That's a. That's a good question. I'd have to go back and look specifically at how they're designated on the inventory. And how the statute refers to historic properties. So it does apply to local designations. But I know some agencies, an inventory. Could be a list of properties that could be historical, or it could be a list of where there is a historical designation. So I'd want to look specifically at that, but in general, if there's a local historical designation, then that would mean SB nine wouldn't apply on those lots. On those properties.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I was jotting down some questions while you were going through things. So bear with me, there are a few questions. So first one is, when we, when you mentioned the presentation that that was ADU, does that also imply? Junior ADU too, like the JADU?
So if you do a split. And then to duplexes, you can't have any other units. So that would include a JADU.
Okay. And and this, from my understanding, at least is for residential properties only. Does SB nine apply to a commercial lots, but?
No, only residential. So and once you do the split, the property can only be used for residential uses.
Would would it apply for? Properties which are designated residential, like mixed use?
Possibly. So it applies where a single family residence is an allowable use. So there's a little bit of ambiguity. As to whether that means a single family zone, where it has to be single family. Or where single family is an optional use. But even if we take the most liberal interpretation. It wouldn't apply in a mixed use zone where you have like commercial and multifamily. So if your mixed use zone is for commercial multifamily. It, you know, at least in my opinion, it would only apply if a property owner could by right. Build a single house on that property.
Yeah, it seems like it's as we get into the details, I think, there'll be a lot of complexities here. The other item was. I wrote it down. Now I don't know what. So. If we're constructing, we can construct ADUs today. As it is, without a lot split. And tomorrow, it seems like you can do a lot split and then have ADUs. What is the material difference between both? Is it the same?
I think there's not much. And I think the practical difference. Is it maybe. It may be more. If the idea is just to have two units, it may be easier and more efficient to do an ADU. So I I don't think there's much of a difference, and I think that's something that. Property owners who are interested in doing this are going to be looking at and are going to be. You know, weighing the pros and cons of each one. Because I'm not sure there's that big of a difference. Now, where there could be a big difference is depending on how your standards work. So if you would allow a ministerial lot split. And then a thirty five hundred square foot house on each one. Or a twelve hundred square foot ADU. Now maybe a property owner wants to do a thirty five hundred square foot house. But if you allow a lot split and then only allow the minimum required in eight hundred square foot. House. Now maybe it's more effective to just do an ADU. So it, in a lot of ways, it's. Two different ways of getting to the same place. And it may come down to how you regulate each of them.
Got it. Yeah, that that is helpful. The and and then the. Still a couple of questions there, sorry. The illegal, the the legal implication. So SB nine, is this? Is this something that we need to do immediately? Is there a timeline around this? Can you comment on that?
So, yeah, great question. SB nine takes effect January one. So as of January one, what that means is the city can't deny any. Can't deny an application for a ministerial law split. So if someone's going to come in at the first of the year, they could theoretically be entitled to that ministerial law split. So there's nothing that the city necessarily has to do right now. But if you do want to clarify any of your regulations or impose new regulations. There, you know, you are counting down to January one, which is coming up very quickly. After January one, you can always adopt additional regulations. You can always change what you've done. So it's not that you have until January one and then, you know, forever hold your peace. But if the regulations aren't in place on January one, theoretically, someone could bring in an application at that time. That wouldn't necessarily be subject to the regulations you want.
Got it. And then how how about the the property tax implications? Say somebody splits a lot. What are you, how is property tax? If in in effect, is it better, worse, the same?
So I don't know, to be frank. That's a really good question. I haven't had that come up yet. My assumption. Is that because. Property taxes are reassessed. I would think when you do a split, there would be a reassessment. Because now you're creating a new legal lot. So I, my assumption is that that would reset property taxes at that time. I'm not sure how property taxes work with ADUs. I I probably should know that. But I would at the very least think that when you do a lot split, that's going to lead to a reassessment. I'll have to look into that and and be sure, because that's a great question. I hadn't thought about that angle of it.
Okay, and then a final one.
Sorry, I hate to break in, but. Please forgive me, but I I know we have one more speaker to get to, and I want to make sure we're staying on time. So. I think right now I'm gonna. End questions and then. We'll move on to our next speaker and then please save your questions for the end and hopefully we'll get to them and. We'll find a way to make sure your questions are answered if they're not answered in this session. So forgive me.
I have Michael's contact, so thank you.
Yes, thank you. So we'll move on. Thank you, Michael, so much. Really appreciate. All the insightful information here. We're going to move on now to David Driscoll from Barrett and Driscoll and his presentation. To kind of talk about how this applies. For us locally and what we can do to really make sure we achieve the goals of affordable housing and. Increased housing locally. Thank you, David.
Great. Thanks. It's everybody. I know your heads are probably about to explode with all the information that was just presented. We presented very well and clearly, but it's a lot. I'm going to give you some more stuff to think about. So just quickly, some key takeaways to, before I jump into it. Just because it's possible to do, doesn't mean everyone's going to do it. And there, I'm going to share some economic analysis that was done. On SB nine, as well as some analysis that we did. Related to the welcome home work last year where we looked at potential expansion of R three and just. The short story is you've got people in. The short story is you've got people in town who could build a duplex, triplex. Down home development on their lot today, and many, 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 many of them have done that. Now SB nine changes the path for them to do that, but for many people, it's already possible. So likely the impacts in Civic Grove will be fairly modest. We'll talk about sort of why that might be and what some of the numbers, the analysis shown. We do need to and will want to in the objective standards work that we've got queued up, do work specifically on. To inform the having objective standards to apply for lot splits and for duplex development that's possible under SB nine because. You won't have the discretionary review process. It will be a ministerial review process and you need to use objective standards for that. And I just want to make sure that we keep track of the fact that we need affordable housing in town, and we have a number of work items that are underway. And we've got the housing element process coming up to identify priorities for how we're going to facilitate the creation of more affordable housing. So just quickly on the just because it's loud doesn't mean it'll happen theme. Michael described the different ways in which the different opportunities people have. And I, you know, one of the big changes is the ministerial review process, not discretionary. So you don't need to, you know, it'll make it easier for people to get there. So they could split their lots, they could create duplexes. You know, the significant difference between having a single family home with an A D U and versus a single family home that has a duplex or. Splitting it into a duplex is the option to split the ownership itself. Whereas an A D U, except in very specific circumstances, it it continues to be part of the single family home property and it's a rental. Or a lot of people don't use it, they use it as an office space or guest room or whatever. And then there's all the details, and I won't go into them all again. But just I'm going to share, I'm using this screen view so I can keep things here and I'm going to put in the chat. But it's not a chat in this, never mind. I put on this on the slide there. This is a graphic. If you go to this link, this guy Alfred too does sort of graph representation of different state laws that. Through legislature. And this just shows all the different variations, the ways in which you could potentially use your single family property. Both in terms of adding A D U to A D U as people were just talking about. Or doing lot splits and doing duplexes. So it's, I haven't gone through it to make sure that this is actually all consistent with what the law says, and that'll be a fun exercise for someone to do. But just so you can see that there's a lot of different things you could potentially do, and a lot of these things are possible to do today. So one of the reports that was done leading up to adoption of SB nine, it was actually done on the draft. It's not in the final bill, but substantially it was the same parameters in the bill that put some additional limitations on things in the final version. The Turner Center, which is associated with the University of California Berkeley. And folks that what's called Mapcraft Labs, and they're actually the folks who did our analysis in Pacific Grove last year. Looked statewide at all the properties, a single family properties in the state. And looked at what would change in terms of the market feasibility for those properties. So they looked at. Things like the current rents and sales prices, what could you get if you did split it and then sold it off versus what could you get if you just kept it as a single family home? The construction costs, land costs associated with redevelopment. The expected return on investment that an investor would have. And took the assumption, which, you know, one caveat, the assumption that the property owner will maximize the economic potential of their lot. And so one thing they didn't control for is motivations and preferences of property owners. I don't know about you, but I've made some decisions in my life that weren't necessarily the most economically beneficial, but I wanted to do it anyway, so I did it. So. It's not to say that their analysis is going to hold true in all cases. People may make a different decision. Another thing that's not reflected in their numbers is the is time, the temporal. Issue which, you know, ADUs became possible statewide on every property in twenty nineteen. And not every property has built A D U, nor will they over the next ten years. So there's the issue of sort of, it's possible, some people are going to act on it sooner, others it's going to take longer. But what they were looking at is the economic feasibility, the market feasible potential of redevelopment. So. I'll send a set of links that the staff can send out after this to some of these materials. So this is the report. It's up on the Turner. Site. Here is a graphic. This was some really quick high level numbers, this statewide numbers. So they looked at all the single family parcels in the state of California. There's seven point five million of them. Those that would be eligible to take out all the ones, all the ones that are excluded coastal zone, historic properties, not big enough. You have six point one million parcels that would be eligible under SB nine. And then they looked at the market feasible parcels. So where would the change in the rules actually make? It feasible, more economically attractive to develop a duplex. Or do a lot split versus keep it a single family home, and that brings that number down to about four hundred and ten thousand. Lots that are market feasible to do that. The last. Part of that inverted pyramid is the yellow, which is, okay, it's possible. How many people are actually going to do it? So four hundred and ten thousand parcels out of seven point five million is not a big number. But it's still a substantial number and kind of how that's distributed. It's not that this is not going to happen. People will split their lots. People will build duplexes because of the will change of SB nine, but it's not going to be on every parcel, not even. So their their findings were that ninety seven percent of single family homes statewide would be retained and not demolished. But it would change a little bit the distribution in terms of the numbers of units that I've seen, what's currently a single family property. Whether it becomes two units, just the duplex or whether it gets split and some of the variations that were shown in a previous graphic or that Mike discussed. So. The top bar here is what we have today. So eighty percent of in terms of the feasibility of what on those parcels, eighty percent would remain single family homes. And we didn't change the rules. One percent might get an additional new unit. Sixteen percent, two units, four percent free. So three additional units would be a quad flex, a four flex. So the biggest there is the triplex. What you see. In the bottom one is you still have the vast majority of properties remaining single family properties. But you have a different distribution in terms of how many units they might come through both the lots but in duplex development. So we did a look last year. Maybe it was earlier this year, it's all a blur. At one of the ideas that came through the conversation we did in the Welcome Home Initiative was potential for expanding our three, our four zoning, mostly our three. And that's the zoning that you have in place in some parts of the city that allow for multiple units being built on on a property. Currently, those those areas have a mix of of development on them, lots of family homes, but also the historic duplexes. Small apartment developments, townhomes. So we looked at, okay, what if we did this? What if we took a larger area and reason on it to be our three, so we could see more of this, what we often call middle housing. Typologies being built. Similar results, maybe it's because we had the same folks looking at it, I don't know. But they they looked at sort of what is it, what's the market potential, what's the economic return on a single family property versus building a duplex? And there, what they came back to was you're probably not going to see much change. In fact. Absent any change in the regulations, what you're likely to see over time is the loss of some of the existing multiple unit developments. Being replaced by larger single family homes, particularly luxury homes. That's just the nature of your market. But they did a highlight some things that could be done if we wanted to reason on and and and. Give an upper hand to some forms of multiple unit development, townhomes in particular. They looked at, well, if we change some height rules and also ground block coverage, that it would be feasible, they'd be competitive with single family homes. And then you might see then some middle housing development in those areas. So what it all means for Pacific Grove, there, it is highly likely that some people will choose to do this. Some people will come in and say, I want to split my lot, so I want to develop a duplex, but probably not very many. And the reason for that is single family homes are very lucrative investments. And people of means don't want to live in a duplex, they want to live in a single family home, and they can afford it. And they will pay to have a single family home. And some of them might have an economic reason to then subdivide it and sell off part of the. Property that might be part of their calculus, but for the most part, people are going to want to live in this. And luxury rentals in particular, in your context, can touch fair penny. Not even, not just taking out of the pool of the short term rentals, but you know, renting them for thirty plus days under your rules. People are willing to pay a good price to to be in Pacific Grove. So if we wanted to, if we said, hey, well, actually we like the things that SB nine does and makes possible, and we actually want to see more. There's things that could be done to incentivize and make more attractive economically, make more competitive. Duplexes, triplexes, duplexes, townhomes, those kinds of middle housing developments. What some other cities have done, Portland, Oregon, it's wouldn't place rules that. The size of the building envelope you can have on a on a currently single family property. It's larger if you're going to do more units. So essentially, if you're going to just have one unit, a single family home. I don't know the exact numbers, but it's about, you know, twenty four hundred square foot home you can build. But if you're going to go to a duplex, you can build three thousand square feet and have two fifteen hundred square foot duplexes rather than one twenty four hundred square foot. There's a lot of more detail we go into. We actually have a working group going on in the Bay Area right now for jurisdictions interested in little housing. That even Northwest, which did this analysis for us and Optico's designer helped me believe. And there's some tools coming out of that that we could share if there were interest in actually trying to create these little housing outcomes. And also put a link there to an article that I wrote with. The folks from even Northwest, summarizing finance, we did a lot of analysis also in San Mateo County. And it was very consistent with their findings statewide on SB nine analysis. Just because he reads on it doesn't make it so. There are many, many, well, every community has own districts they put in place that the market didn't respond to and didn't build what they wanted to see built there. Because if it's not market feasible, the market's not going to do it. I'm just going to touch briefly on sort of how does this, well, sort of the work we're doing and just sort of. Bring us back to the, you know, thinking about what what's the kind of community we're trying to create? And how does SB nine, what has become a tool to take us in that direction or not? And sort of the other, the other state law changes that were. We've already actually incorporated and are working on in terms of the near term action. So when we did the outreach last year, then we had like. Hundred and seventy, hundred and eighty people, this is the kinds of words they describe, the kind of community they want to live in. We talked about previously how much our workforce in Civic Grove makes. It's, you know, it varies. Some people make a pretty good income, others are are lower income. We measure affordability by that thirty percent of the income being able to pay for housing. So that gave you some idea of how much people can afford to pay. And, you know, the big takeaway is the mismatch between the incomes of our workforce, particularly as a service oriented economy. And the housing that's available. So two thirds of people who work here can't afford to live here. Well, actually more than that. Rents are high, they've been high, they're not going to come down. And route sales prices in particular have been going up significantly. You've got high land costs, you have high construction costs, so the market wants to build high cost housing because that pays off that that investment. That's why luxury single family homes is a very. Attractive development option. So the bigger, one of the biggest trends we're seeing around the Bay Area and. Around California and the country is. Older single family homes being upgraded, being scraped and replaced with a larger luxuries in the family home or just being redone entirely to make it more attractive. And fetch a higher price. So affordable housing, we've talked about, I'm not going to go into it right now, but you know, just thinking, we're thinking about the gamut from ADUs as a form of affordable housing. Sort of naturally occurring affordable housing, older units, older apartments. And then the example of this to point in terms of something that's built by a nonprofit and managed as affordable housing for a long period of time. So we need affordable housing for the workforce. We need affordable housing for seniors, for children and grandchildren. And as we've talked about before, we will never meet the need. Full need of it, but we can do some significant things that'll make a difference. So that was all laid out in the. Welcome Home Plan that we finished in June. And here's the near term action. Just a reminder, so these actions are actually. Focused on local implementation of state law. So state law has established density bonus. It was adjusted last year or two years ago. So now you can get up to a fifty percent density bonus, depending on what percentage of your development is affordable. And there's a bunch of different categories for seniors or low income or moderate income. And you get up to eighty percent density bonus if you're a hundred percent affordable development. The trick is sort of how do you translate that into, it's all a bonus above your base zone. So. That's clear in some sometimes and not very clear other times. Some of the points that Mike was bringing up, like you may say you can build to this. But when you start applying your heights and limits or setbacks and things, it's nearly impossible to actually do it. So. State density bonus law and then SB thirty five say, well, you you need to give concessions so that people can get to that density bonus. So. The work here is to define how do you apply density bonus law in Pacific Grove? What kinds of concessions are appropriate, particularly related to parking, but also other standards? So that you can see the kinds of housing outcomes you want. And this is just, this is a pretty significant incentive to build affordable housing. To get a fifty percent density bonus. So there's, we're seeing more developments around the state that are taking advantage of that C bonus law. And then there's the objective development standards, which we've talked about before, a lot of detail, but, you know. Same, we're going to approve or deny something based on neighborhood compatibility. Is highly subjective unless you have a very, very clear definition of what you mean by neighborhood compatibility, but five different people can read and reach the same conclusion about whether. Development is compatible or not. So developing objective standards is a key part of work effort now. I'm going to go through this quickly. We're short on time. Streamliner view is another area. So this is again a state law that was passed. And it. It establishes a number of requirements for, you know, we call ministerial review. So there's not. Public hearing where decisions made based on whether the review body likes it or not. There needs to be a clear set of standards. The staff reviews that. There is though still a design review. So there is. Opportunity to have designer review board or planning commission or even city council meeting to say, hey. Here's our objective standards. Here's how, you know, get feedback on the design of a project. But any decision of approval or denial needs to be made on those objective standards. And there is a very strict timeline for doing the review and approval process. So. Defining what the streamline review looks like, you want it to look back in Pacific Grove. Is important so that we can not be making it up on the fly. But have some agreed upon approach when SB thirty five develops, which there's not been a lot of SB thirty five developments around the state, but we're seeing more. As we become more familiar with it. And I'd just say nonprofit housing developers, these, these are great tools for them to have more certainty. One, if you talk to developers, like what's the thing that gets in their way all the time? Just tell me what it is you want me to build, like. Not a guessing game, like going through a process like eight times of eight revisions to design to try to figure out whether it's going to work or not. Tell me upfront if you want, so I can figure, I can do my feasibility analysis and decide whether it's something that I can do. So. We'll be working on objective standards. And I just wanted to highlight the opportunity sites piece, which we had a nice panel. I know many of you were able to make it on October eighteenth. We do have a recording that's been put up on the project homepage on the city's website. And I was hearing from both nonprofit and for profit developers who build affordable housing. Some examples of what they've done in other communities and some thoughts they have about how to make those kinds of partnerships work. You've got city on land, the school design, we talked about these in some of the previous meetings. As we go into the housing element process. We're really going to want to look at some of these opportunity sites, and they could be privately on site too, where we rezone. To make. Make the vision possible. One of the things here to think about, so as we look at potential sites, some of them have voter restrictions on them. And whether you want to in the election next year, go to the voters and ask for change in that, if we do some analysis. The the advantage here is that cities and all these other things, you are creating regulations to try to. Direct market, the market to do what you want it to do. In these situations, you get actually described and defined what it is you want to do. Who do you wanna serve? How much housing do you want? What kind of mix of housing? What are the kinds of uses you might want? So I'm gonna keep underscoring, I think these are great, real opportunity sites. But they do, every single one of them has obstacles and will want to figure out which sites rise to the top. And what kind of action plan do you want to have to facilitate development? And I know you have on your agenda later this evening, I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail here, discussion of inclusionary housing. And that's a great tool. We've worked with communities to put together, put in place inclusionary housing or inclusionary zoning programs. There are different, many different flavors of what that looks like. A lot of it's driven by the context that you have and what you're trying to achieve. So, you know, the important thing here is that it's, you are. Basically asking developments that are happening, market rate developments to make contribution towards affordable housing, either through. Sites they build, affordable units they create in their development, or by paying a fee. Given your development. Historic development patterns or recent development patterns, you mostly get single family homes in very small developments. You would need to set the bar fairly low. So every single family home that comes through pays towards. Meeting your affordable housing needs. A lot of jurisdictions, they'll separate it out of five unit or seven unit, eight unit development. And anything above that pays or provides it for allowed and below just not. But I think in your case, you really need to think about setting that low. There's a list of things here, you can make them mandatory or voluntary, you can apply it just to residential, you can apply it to commercial, you can apply it to both. You can say you've gotta do the unit on site, or you can say offsite, obviously, if you're paying the fee, that needs to go into a fund and you have a plan about it. You're gonna spend that money, we're gonna create some housing. And you need to balance it with the feasibility of the project. So the challenge of a port of an inclusionary program is. You're essentially adding to the cost of the market development. And again, if it's a, you know, high end development, that cost. May not affect feasibility at all. But for larger developments that have an affordable housing component, those become really, you need to fine tune that balance and. If you don't get any development happening, then you don't get any affordable housing benefit from it. Yeah, so there there would be work to be done. I included on the bottom here, that's great site inclusionary housing.org if you're not familiar with it. It's a great place to go and pick around a bit. They've got a. Inclusionary zoning calculator, where you can build different scenarios and understand what's the impact. And different levels of affordability requirements on a development. But so there's a fair amount of work to do to put some in place. One thing to think about would be if through the house on the process or another process, we're looking at upzoning. Parts of the community to facilitate more large developments. That would be, I think, a really important thing to put in place as part of it upzoning would be an inclusionary requirement. Right now, you don't get a lot of, no, large developments coming in now. So. That might be something to think about if you were making some changes in the downtown or for them for sale to. Encourage more large developments than you would be requiring inclusionary. And then. I'm just gonna do a real quick on the housing element. It's a lot of these things intersect with, because the housing element is the state requirement, state required housing plan. For Pacific Grove. We'll spend a lot of quality time in the coming year, talking about the housing elements for Pacific Grove. The state has put more and more requirements on the housing element. It is the one part of the general plan that gets reviewed and certified by the state. That process become a bit more disciplined, I'd say. And after a recent state law requires more review time for the public and for HCDs, so it's changes the timeline a little bit. There's a number of pieces of the house element, I won't go into all of them, but certainly an important part of it is the sites inventory. And we need to demonstrate that we have. Enough capacity to build to meet our projected housing needs. It's very related to the action plan that we've been doing that we have in place, but it's a bit different. We've got a good head start in looking at opportunity sites. For those who have not heard the word Rena, it's not really a word, it's actually an abbreviation. RHNA, we'll be talking about a lot in the coming year, regional housing allocation. Ambag has received a number from the state, so this is, it's an eight year planning period, and they say, here's how much housing that the region needs. Plan for, and that number then gets given up to all the jurisdictions in the Ambag area. Association Monterey Bay Area governments. The numbers are higher this year because of some changes in state law that said we need to count for that future housing need. Not just what the growth is, but also unmet need that we have today. There's a lot more specifics in it than that, but. The number, the last, the last planning period was twenty fourteen to twenty twenty three, Ambag was told you need to plan for ten thousand four hundred thirty units. And a hundred fifteen of those units were identified as being the regional housing need for Pacific Grove. This planning period, that number has gone up by a factor of three. To thirty three thousand two hundred seventy four units for the region. Ambag has not done the distribution yet. They're working on the methodology, and I know staff are involved in those conversations, probably some of you are too. Once that methodology is agreed upon, those numbers will come out, it's expected in January of next year, that we'll have numbers. And then December of twenty twenty three is when the housing need to be completed and certified by the state. So. That will be a big focus. Right now, we're focused on those near term actions, the density bonus, the screen on review and objective standards. We will be factoring in SB nine into the objective standards and look forward to any feedback or additional direction. You might have or questions this evening. Staff is engaged with the Ambag process. There's a lot of great work the city's been doing on ADUs, which will be a great way to also meet your arena requirements. I could talk a little bit more about that if you want. That's my last slide.
Thank you, David. So we'll go ahead and take question, a few more questions and then. Well, we're getting to five twenty, so I wanna hold off on the question, sorry about that. And allow for some public comment. So I'm gonna have the city clerks. Open it up for public comment. We're gonna have a two minute, two minute comment period.
Thank you. Ms. Wyatt, we have Anthony Chiani. Mr. Chiani, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. That was a great presentation by, by everybody. Real simple question is, how is this funded? How is the effort? To do what we just saw funded? Does the state contribute money to that? Does that come out of our general fund? Who pays for it? It's, it needs to be done, has to be done. Where's it come from?
I see no other hands raised at this time. Sorry, turn it to you, Ms. Wyatt.
Okay, great. We'll go ahead and then start answering questions. And David, it seemed like you're able, you were ready to kind of address that question. So why don't we go with that one question first? And then we'll open it up for the council and planning commission.
Yeah, so the planning efforts that I just described were funded through state grants. The first one was through what's called SB two grant at Stateville two. And then the upcoming work for the housing element is funded by state funds flowing through Ambag. Under what's called the regional early action planning grants and also the local early planning action.
Great, thank you, David. And I'll just quickly say that a lot of the lower income units need heavy subsidies. In order to be able to develop those types of units. So when it comes to meeting our Rena obligations, those very low and low income units are gonna be. The most challenging to, to build, and we definitely need more subsidies from the state. So I'll leave it at that. We'll, we'll go ahead and take questions here. I'll just go from who I see first, Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you. And I'm gonna follow up on your point, a question to both our speakers. It seems to me SD nine, SB nine does not compel affordability. So first question would be. What restrictions, if any? Can be placed to ensure that these are rented out or occupied at below market rates?
Michael, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you are not allowed to put any deep restrictions on an SB nine.
So you. You're, you're allowed to oppose objective zoning standards, but nothing in SB nine restricts the units to affordable. So, uh, under the state law, you can do a lot split without it being an affordability restriction. It doesn't necessarily mean if you were to have some other sort of inclusionary housing requirement. That that wouldn't apply, because you could apply objective standards, but there's nothing specific that says these units are gonna be affordable units.
That's my understanding as well. Thank you. In another follow up regarding SB nine. Say a property already has an ADU and a JADU, so that's three dwelling units. And then they come in and they, once January one rolls around, they come in and they want to apply for SB nine. Consideration. Could then they develop three more additional units to come to a total of six dwelling units?
So they could. I believe, I, I wanna be careful. They could do the split, the restriction on ADUs. Is that you can't avail yourself of both the lot split and the SB nine duplex. So if you have existing ADU, my understanding is it wouldn't necessarily prevent you from doing the lot split. And then you could look at potential ADUs beyond there. I don't know if you could do an ADU and a JDU. I'd have to check if you could do both in that situation.
My understanding is that the SB nine. Applies to post lot split, not pre lot split, but that would, that would be, that would be good, good to know. I would point out that there is a ballot initiative. That has just been approved by the Secretary of State, and I have asked the city clerk to distribute that to the panelists via email. It's a statewide ballot measure. It would essentially roll back the state mandates as regards to their recent. Housing initiatives. So that's gonna be something we're gonna wanna follow too. And if we. If we get ahead of the curve, as it were, and start changing our zoning, upzoning. And then this ballot initiative were to pass, then the, at any rate, that needs to be thrown into this very complicated mix as well. And for now, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Coletti. Planning Commissioner Byrne.
Thank you. Just wanna clarify, so SB nine does not apply. To the coastal zone, is that correct? And. And the city could limit the lot split duplex to eight hundred square feet per unit. Is that correct?
That's correct. It, it's not that it doesn't apply in the coastal zone. It's that it doesn't override your coastal development plan. So whatever coastal restrictions you have are still applicable. But if you can do lot split within those restrictions, it doesn't necessarily prevent it.
Thank you. There's a myriad of questions because some of this doesn't make sense, but that's all for me.
I'll just, I mean, I'll just add in, but one of the things that people talked about, and there was strong interest in, in the. Planning discussions this last year was around small lot subdivision. Yeah, not, yeah, we'll talk about it potentially could be citywide or in particular parts of town where you actually have a historic pattern of small lots, but down to eighteen hundred square feet.
I do have one more comment and. That is, none of this actually solves low income housing. Just the funding alone for these programs that you have presented. I think somebody made the point, how's it funded? That means all of us taxpayers are actually funding all these because grants, et cetera, are taxpayer money. So. We're the ones that are funding it.
The SB two is a tax when you record a real property transfer. I believe it's a seventy five dollar tax, so like when you buy a home. And that tax goes into the pool that then becomes the grants to do these planning grants, the SB two points that David mentioned.
It's all part of why there's no affordable housing in California, because everything is expensive. The, the permitting fees are part of the problem. Anyway.
Thank you, Commissioner Byrne. Commissioner Chackwin, I see you next.
Thank you, Ms. Wyatt. Mr. Mar, Mr. Driscoll, thank you very much for excellent presentations. They're very clear, and I hope we can get copies of those slides. Two quick questions. Right now, right here, water stops or slows development. Will this do, will it do the same for the, the lot splits and development executed under the trio of plans you presented today? And the second question I have is, your slide twenty five provided some. SB thirty five shot clock, sixty and ninety day shot clocks for qualifying timeline, qualifying development timelines. And I'm wondering. Having dealt with a lot of shot clocks in the past with these things. Are there, how hard are they? Are there, wait, is, does the language include ways to, you know, stop them, to pause the clocks and that kind of stuff? Or, or, or is this another like streamlining act, but worse?
Well, the second part is the streamlining act. And, yeah, I don't think there's many pause buttons built into it. So. Depending on the, depending on the size of the development and look, you have a sixty or a ninety day clock. They run concurrent. Alright, so there's actually sixty days for one part, ninety days for another, but you have to make a decision within that time period. Most of these laws are basically trying to, you know, the biggest challenge in California, why are housing is so expensive? Because we don't have enough of it. We've been building less and less housing over the last twenty, thirty years than we did historically, and we have a severe shortage. So SB nine isn't about creating deed restricted affordable housing, but it's about creating more. And I'm making that up, not, not preaching, I'm just, that's, that's the motivation behind the legislation.
You answer the water question?
It doesn't change anything on the waterfront, as far as I know. So you still have to have a meter on the property, all those things would apply.
So i- is the question about water availability?
Question is, if I wanted to build a place today, first of all, there's a moratorium of a new meter, second, were there to be a meter? I would have to have an allocation of water that I could put on the property. So if I'm splitting the lot, maybe this slot split doesn't exist right up. Because A, I don't have a second meter, or B, I don't have an allocation, that, maybe we could buy someone on the side. But so it seems to me this is not applicable to us. Yeah, I'm trying to see if is it applicable to us in current law and current sanctions that we have.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good question, because it's still, at the end of the day, it's still a ministerial right to build based on your standards. And you can't build a house if you can't serve water on it. So, you know, I think. There, there's different ways to approach how that would. How that would actually work out in practice under SB nine, but I think at the end of the day. You're getting a will serve letter for water is, is. Key for building, you have to have it.
Thank you, Commissioner Chackwin. And I will recognize Commissioner Blum.
Thank you. I just wondered, I think we had, I'm, I'm not sure, maybe it was just a discussion, I'm not sure if we passed something. Uh, thank you. I just wondered, I think we had, I'm, I'm not sure, maybe it was just a discussion, I'm not sure if we passed something that said that we couldn't really apply for a lot split now. If we didn't have a water meter for that, for that lot split, I guess that's my first question. And then my second just has to do with the state and the billions and billions and billions of dollars they got from the federal government. They seem to, seem to have a lot of money right now, and I just wondered, have they, are they putting any of that? Maybe this question's been answered before, but are they putting any of that towards affordable housing? For grants? Has that been discussed? And those are my two questions.
Allison, did you want to, I wasn't sure if you put your hand up to answer.
Yeah, I, if I could just chime in on the water meter question. The council did just adopt a temporary moratorium on new applications for lot splits where there is no meter that could serve the newly created parcel. So we still have our meter issue here on the peninsula. I don't see how SB nine subdivision could override that. You would still need to have the appropriate meter to serve any new development on a newly created parcel. And I do not have any answer to Commissioner Blum's second question.
And I think that's one of, that's one of the biggest challenges, is where's the funding come from when you're talking about affordable housing? There are programs out there that go through HCD that are grant programs and things like that. There's the tax credit program, which is one of the primary ways that affordable housing gets built. But what, and I'm editorializing a little bit here, what I think is lacking is any sort of program that's funding that's controlled by local government. Because that's where, you know, that's kind of why I let off with redevelopment going away. Is redevelopment was something where there was local government control. There have been some bills that have gone through the legislature that have looked at different sort of funding sources that cities and other local governments could pull from. But I think that's one of the challenges, is cities are in the position where they're able to plan for this. But cities don't necessarily have a funding source to put into it. So again, it's a little bit of editorializing, I don't want to step out of, out of bounds, but it's something that the state has talked about replacing and has never replaced so far.
I can't remember the exact dollar amount, but the city did actually succeed in a grant proposal that is actually to support affordable housing development. And there is a REIT two point O that's in the planning stages from the state, which is actually to follow up on this planning period around housing elements to actually support affordable housing development. And then they also recently announced a grant program for income-qualified homeowners who want to build an ADU. I can get up to like a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to support, because right now, one of the biggest challenges, people with people of means can build ADUs, but others are having a hard time financing if you don't have access to capital or equity. So there's a program specifically for low income, lower income, moderate income.
Thank you. I'll go to Commissioner Aislingman.
Let's assume for a minute that we have some possibilities of lot splits that, of property that have protected trees on them. Making a smaller lot to build a house of a certain size. What would be, would, would there be any protection for those trees?
So it would it would depend on the nature of the protected trees.
Heritage trees.
If it's things that are endangered, then I think it falls under the exception. If it's not, then I think we look at whether there are one, an objective development standard that would prevent it. So that would prevent, you know, harm to the tree. And then two, we do have that ultimate fallback exception where you would look at whether this would be harmed in the physical environment that couldn't be adequately mitigated. So there are options that would have to be looked at. You know, from a big thirty thousand foot level, it's hard to give an answer, but I think any of those options would be potential considerations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Amelia.
Thank you. I have just a couple of real quick questions, because I know we're running a little short on time, but the first, a couple of questions, Allison or Anastasia, do, do you see anything down the pipeline coming in? Possible affordable housing or lot splits or anything? Do, do you see anything coming down the pipeline?
I can take that one. We, we have had one interested person who came in to discuss a, a potential subdivision using SB nine. They do have an additional meter. So we're, we're in discussion about that. We have also had some preliminary discussions with an SB thirty-five developer for an affordable housing project, but nothing has been submitted. We, we don't have any timeframes at this point.
I see, okay, thank, thank you. And a couple of the questions. I'll, I'll save the last one. Da- David. You, you work in other cities, is that correct? Or, right? Do you work in other cities also?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm just curious, we're obviously enclosed here in Pacific Grove. And do, do you know of a city like Sacramento or someone that really has is, is ripe for lot splits? And I'm just curious.
Yeah, you know, the, so one of the things that you go, I'll, again, I'll send the links, the Turner Center report had jurisdiction-specific projections for any jurisdiction of five thousand lots or more, so but I think Seaside is in that mix, Santa Cruz. So their, their analysis showed that the place that would have the highest, but again, like, we're talking highs in like three percent of the properties. Los Angeles would see more lot splits and some of the more agricultural, like Central Valley communities would see more than the statewide average. But then you had other cities that the percentage was almost nothing. In terms of what, again, that's that, then what they're testing, that market feasible sort of shift from a single-family home being the highest and best use to a duplex.
Okay, thank you. Then the other question for either Allison or Anastasia, Allison. If, if, if Pacific Grove Unified School District suddenly had a abandoned property and they wanted to sell it, I would imagine we'd probably be, for the city of Pacific Grove, be interested in looking at that. Is that, if, if it happens, I don't know. I'm just.
Yes, we, I would, I would expect the city would be interested in looking at that, but just to note that all of the school district properties are zoned unclassified, and that's, that's one of the voter initiative zoning districts that is very constrained. So the, even if there was surplus land, we would have to go through some, some hoops to make that land developable for housing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Amelia. Commissioner Murphy.
I, I think it's a simple question. If, if someone owns a single-family home in Pacific Grove and he or she wants to have, you know, two homes on that property. It's up to them if they want to apply under the ADU, ADU law versus the SB nine law. Is that how that would work, depending upon what they want to do?
That's correct.
Right. Just to be clear, an ADU would be an accessory to their home.
Right.
Main unit is a single-family home, they can't sell this, the ADU. If they wanted to sell, they would need to do the duplex.
Is that the main difference between the, between the two?
As far as I know, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Coletti.
Yeah, a quick question just occurred to me. If someone comes in for an SB nine lot split, but the second lot that was created is totally inaccessible and there's no way to get access to it through lot number one. What, what objective standard could be used to deny that lot split? Thank you.
So there, there actually is a provision in SB nine that says the split lot has to connect to the public right of way. So you would have to have a public right-of-way connection.
Great. Okay, I, I see no other hands raised, so I will turn it over to the mayor to adjourn.
Thank you very much. This was an extremely informative meeting. And thanks to our presenters, to staff, to council and commissioners and the public. And meeting adjourned.